To do that which is necessary. Father, we pray blessings upon all those who may need them. All these things we ask in thy name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Roll call, Katie.
Commissioner Cheek is absent.
Actually, he's online.
I apologize, he's attending virtually.
All right. We're here today to receive comments from the public only. This is, um, this, this meeting is in regard to the tentative millage rate increase. We're here to receive comments from the public only. Nancy will give a presentation before we receive those comments, but first, how did we get here? Each year, the board updates its strategic plan usually in December. These meetings are open to the public, but attendance has historically been minimal. In the past nine years, only three people have attended and they did not stay for the entire meeting. This year's plan, along with previous year's plans, are available on the county website. Their strategic plan is shaped by public input gathered through past board members, meetings, public hearings, emails, phone calls, ongoing communications between staff, constitutional officers, the public, and the board. Once adopted, the plan serves as a roadmap for the county's operations and informs the agenda for our regular meetings throughout the year. This is our working document. This year's strategic plan, which all commissioners helped develop in January, identified several key objectives. Jail construction. The jail is a top priority, is a proposed 300-bed general security facility. DeKalb County, for comparison, is considering either a 152 or 200-bed facility at a cost of $185,000 to $219,000 per bed. We believe that a new jail built here can be done for less. SPOS 9 allocates $10 million towards jail construction, and we expect some surplus from SPOS 8 as well. If approved, the tentative tax increase would contribute an additional $3.5 million to the down payment for the jail. This will reduce the amount of bonded debt shared between the jail and animal control facility from an estimated $39 million to an estimated $35.5 million, saving taxpayers approximately $2 million in interest over time. They project an annual principal and interest payment for a $35.5 million 20-year term bond is about $2.8 million. For a $39 million bond, the annual payment would be about $3.1 million. The higher the down payment, the lower the annual debt payment. Animal control. The board decided to include this as part of the jail complex. It has no funding source and is expected to cost around $3 million. For reference, Glen County built theirs for $4 million, and it is already near or at capacity. The JDA funding. The board supports development of a large commercial industrial park in its strategic plan. SPOS 9 designates $3 million for part of the entrance road construction. You can see their surveyors have been working at the intersection of 17 and Harretts Bluff. The JDA board is requesting an increase in annual funding from $1 million to $2.25 million over the next five years. County park maintenance. Under the recently updated intergovernmental agreement, which was a top priority between the county, the PSA, and the cities, the county will assume maintenance of all county-owned parks and boat ramps starting January 1. There are 15 parks and boat ramps that are county-owned. This cost would be funded through the unincorporated service district, meaning city residents will not be affected. The tentative increase would cover equipment and staffing. Future costs would decrease once the initial equipment purchases are made. First-year cost estimate is $977,389. This would include equipment, operating costs, and salaries. The next year, it would drop to $538,567 for just operating costs and salaries. Thus, the unincorporated service district would be adjusted down in year two of the takeover from the PSA. An increase of 135 point, 131.5 of the unincorporated service district millage rate is needed to cover the first-year cost. This is just for the unincorporated service millage rate and not your county-wide tax. If you are in an unincorporated area, this tax is the smallest amount on your tax bill. Another goal of the plan is to maintain a strong fund balance without using the fund balance to balance the budget. A fund balance goal of 40% is what the plan calls for. A healthy fund balance helps us secure lower interest rates when issuing bonds ultimately saving taxpayers money. Large projects like these come with what we call F-bombs, funding bombs. This is where the conversation about funding and possible tax increases become necessary. To fully fund these projects without using fund balance, we would need 18.2% county-wide millage rate increase. Funding only some of these projects or partially funding all of them would reduce this amount. Setting the millage rate is just one step in the broader budget process, which includes an audit after the end of the fiscal year. Each budget undergoes an audit by an independent external auditor, and these audits can be found on the county website. In developing the budget, a budget committee comprising the chairman, one other commissioner, the county administrator, and finance staff reviews all budget requests. However, any commissioner can propose changes at any point up to budget adoption. Additionally, any commissioner can vote against any item on, any item on an agenda that requires funding. But it is during the budget process where the whole board focuses on cutting unnecessary spending. Likewise, it is during the strategic plan, planning meetings where the board prioritizes projects. Unfortunately, we have not always had 100% participation by board members in these meetings. Currently, four commissioners have indicated support for some form of tax increase this year. One commissioner, Mr. Turner, has stated he does not support any increase at all this year. If two more commissioners had joined him, the public notice for this hearing would have been different. Going forward, decisions about advertising for a tentative tax increase will be discussed during work sessions to enhance transparency. The board is scheduled to decide on funding for these four projects at our October 7th regular meeting when the millage rates will be set. Another note about impact fees. You know, we see a lot of construction going on in the county. The only time the county collects impact fees is if it is in the unincorporated area. So anything that's happening within the boundaries of Kingsland or St. Mary's, the county sees no impact fees. Federal money, oh, let me get back to that. And if those developments are happening within a TAD, the TAD receives the increases in tax value to help pay down for the infrastructure that is going on in those areas. Thus, the cities receive the vast amount of that money. We don't see, receive that money. A lot of people have mentioned stuff about federal money. Federal government owns over 30,000 acres, the state owns over 30,000 acres, the local government's own over 3,000 acres. Those are off the tax roll. In place of that, the federal government, I know several years ago, they paid us $58,000. The state doesn't pay that much. So we received less than $100,000 in state and federal monies for those properties. If you're interested in learning more about how the county operates, we offer a citizens' academy each year. The sheriff offers a similar program. You even get to tour the jail with his. I believe it's important for everyone to understand how their local governments work. Okay, after the presentation from Nancy, we'll open up the floor for public comments. Those comments will be limited to three minutes. A little light here, when the yellow light comes on, that means you have one minute left. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Nancy.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm just going to review some of the information that you had just spoke about and just cover some general information about the county as well. If I could get, there we go. So these are the areas I'm going to be covering, just a 10-year snapshot of the county-wide, which is really the general fund, and also the unincorporated tax district, which is all the unincorporated areas. So if you're not in the city of Kingsland, St. Mary's, or Woodbine, you're in an unincorporated area. Property tax analysis and a review of what you had just spoken about, the major capital project funding and the current budgets, and then just a summary of all that. So the first section is a 10-year snapshot of information. So this goes from 2016 through a tentative 2025. And the orange line is the net digest. And a digest is where we generate property taxes from and where all the assessed values of properties are. And you could see in 2016, it was 1.25, and that's billions of dollars. And over the next 10 years, the current digest is $2.44 billion. That's a 95% increase in digest values over that 10 years. And we also have to remember, I didn't go back a prior 10 years, but the recession in 2008, 2009, our digest plummeted by 30% over that period of time. So from 2009 through 2016, that's the lowest value that it had been in years. So this recovery, that lineup, is just the recovery of the county's property digest over that period. And then the green line is the millage rates that have been set from 2016 through 2025. I've just highlighted a couple there. I have another slide that shows more of a detail. But back in 2016, the millage rate for countywide taxes was 13.94. It's gone as high as 15.79 in 2019. And the tentative proposed for 2025 taxes is 14.1 mills. So the next slide is, this is a detail of the millage rates over that 10-year period of time. And if, if I could, I don't know if this highlighter, this works that well, it really doesn't. Um, the third column over, the millage rates, that's, again, that 2019 was one of the, I think that is the highest millage rate we've had, and that was our first round of public safety pay increases that were really due at that time. So we did have to raise the millage rate for that. Since then, we always talk about rollback rate and change in rollback rate and, and the proposed or tentative rollback rate for this year. We're talking about an 18.2% increase. We always go back to the rollback rate, and I actually have a definition, or I thought I did in here, maybe not. A rollback rate is the rate that the county would set on your property that would generate the same amount of revenue for the county. So if property So if property taxes or property values go up, the theory is you could charge less as a millage rate and still generate the same amount of taxes. So there's a computation that's driven by the state of Georgia. It's a mandatory calculation that we look at all different things. We look at the inflationary factors, and we come up with a rollback rate, which is the 11.929. That's why in everything that we advertise has to be in relation to the rollback rate. So although last year, that third column over, last year's taxes were 12.1 mills, the rollback rate was actually 12.105, so it was a little bit less than that. And, let's see. This is our fund balance. So this is our reserves. This is our savings, if you will, over the last 10 years. And you could see from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 19 that it really had decreased quite a bit. We have a financial policy that we have that our goal is always to maintain a minimum of 25% of fund balance. And what that is compared to is your budget. So we would compare that last column over, fiscal year 25, we have $14.7 million in savings, and our budget is about $47 million, so that computes to that we have 30% in savings. But you could see in like 2019, it's very low. We had $3 million in savings. That was only 9% of the budget. In fiscal year 16, that was only 15% of the budget. A lot of, there was spending that was going on, but there was also a real decrease in the digest values. So we needed to use fund balance over those years. And the progression since then has just been the increase in the tax that we are able to generate from the increases in the tax digest. And there's a lot of reasons that we want to maintain a healthy fund balance. Number one, we're a coastal community, so we want to ensure that we have money in the bank in case there ever was a disaster. I've been here through Hurricane Irma, Matthew, Helene, Debbie, and I think that there's probably a couple more in there. Just the Helene and Debbie alone was almost a half a million in cost to the county. So yes, it's not 14 million, but it also could have been 2 million in damages to the county. And it's all reimbursable by FEMA, but everything takes time. I've not received the final FEMA payment from Hurricane Helene, which was just a year ago. And it's not through any kind of lack of due diligence on the part of finance. It's on just, the process takes a long time with FEMA. So you would be out of that money if it was a $2 million disaster or a $3 million disaster. You'd be out of that money until it was reimbursed by FEMA or GMA. Another reason is just when we're looking at financing for a jail or an animal control facility, it's no different than if you apply for credit for, you know, to get a home loan, they're going to give you a much better credit rating if you have savings in the bank, if you have a good down payment, if you're creditworthy. All of that goes into what your interest payment is going to be. So if we had reserves of 3 million in 2019, I could guarantee that an interest rate on any kind of long-term loan would be much different than it would be in 2025, or even if we were able to grow that a little bit more. So I just wanted to go over that a bit. This is on the unincorporated tax district. Again, if you don't live in the city of Kingsland, city of St. Mary's, or city of Woodbine, you're in the unincorporated tax district. And the orange line is the net digest, and where the general fund was in billions of dollars, this is millions of dollars. It's a much smaller amount of property value. So in 2016, the property value on the digest was, and this is the net digest, $397 million. It's now $657 million, and that's only an increase of 65%, where on the countywide digest, that had increased 95%. This has increased 65% because there's not as much growth in the unincorporated tax district. And I live there, so I know as well. So, and the green line is the millage rate over that 10-year period of time. In 2016, it was .67. In 2019, we went up quite a bit, and I'll have a detail on that on the next slide. And then the tentative that we're discussing now is for 2025, raising it to 2.6 mills. And this is a detail of those millage rates. If you look at the third column, the highlighted area, 2019, that's when we took a big jump. The taxes compared to the rollback rate went up 152% to 1.655. And that was due to, we were trying to replace equipment for the fire departments up in the unincorporated area. So I believe it was a tanker or an engine, and they're very costly now. So that was our first increase. And over the past several years, we've been increasing on a regular basis fire equipment in the unincorporated area. So in 2025, again, the tentative that, for discussion, is the 2.6 mills, and that's 131% increase. And this is a fund balance in the unincorporated district. This is not regulated through our finance policy. The general fund is, but it is good to maintain a fund balance. And this is called a special revenue fund. So we get earnings from taxes. We get earnings from insurance premium tax, and we could only spend it on stuff for the unincorporated area, specifically fire. We use it for public works, for mowing, and also for recreation. This is where the PSA gets funded from. So right now, as of the end of fiscal year 25, which ended June 30th, it's kind of a point in time on fund balance. We had just over a million in fund balance. I know that in the fiscal year 26 budget, we do have more capital equipment budgeted. So we are planning, are already using probably at least half of that in fiscal year 26 for equipment for public works and for the fire department. This is looking at the property taxes. In Camden County, for countywide taxes, we have what's called a homestead exemption freeze. And this is something that went into effect in 2006. It was passed by Senate Bill 496. And it's an exemption that is equal to the difference between the assessed fair market value and what they call the base year. And we are, I believe, there's about 36 or 37 counties in the state of Georgia out of 159 counties that have a freeze. And it really affects what the collections are in tax revenue to run the county. So this is a depiction of this, that in 2016, if you bought a house for $150,000, in 2016, the millage rate was 13.94. There's a calculation you go through that I didn't depict up there, but we take the fair market value of 150,000. We come up with the taxable value, which is only 40% of that 150, and we apply the millage rate to it. So that, that whole thing would have resulted in about $781 in taxes in 2016. Last year, the millage rate was less than 2016 millage rate. It was 12.1. But because of the homestead freeze, you may have received a tax assessment notice from the assessor's office saying the value on your house now is 300,000. But if you're still owning that same house from 2016, you're still only going to be taxed on 150,000 of that because it was frozen at that point. So if you bought a property in 2006 for $75,000 and it's now worth $450,000, you're still frozen at that $75,000 that you're paying the tax on. Now, that last depiction there on the right is if we had no freeze, like many counties in the state of Georgia don't have a freeze, you would have been taxed on that $300,000, the new fair market value, and applying that millage rate of 12.1, it would have resulted in $1,400 in taxes, so much more. So that, that tax freeze is an incredible benefit for the taxpayer, but it also makes it difficult to generate revenue for the county. So this is a depiction, since that, the time that this was passed, the savings for the taxpayer because of that. Like each year, the tax assessor has a digest, and they have an amount that they say is this is exempt from taxes because of the homestead freeze. So each year, that's what's depicted. And you could see, especially from 2019 through 2024, that's when we really start making growth. Well, that just, that number gets bigger and bigger. Your value of your house is much more, but you're still paying on that smaller value, so the savings is even more. But what also happens with this is the county still needs to run, and the county still needs to generate revenue. So the, this homestead freeze really shifts that tax burden to non-homestead property. Non-homestead property is commercial property. It's if you own a home and it's rental income. It's a home that you live in another state, that's your, that's really your main residence, and you just have a home here part of the year. You can't have homestead exemption here. So the cumulative over those years has been $32 million, which is pretty significant. And I just always like to add that, the homestead exemption, if you don't have it and it is your permanent residence, you need to apply for that at the tax assessor's office or go to the website because it's something you apply for. It just doesn't automatically go to your property because you bought a piece of property. So this is just an example of different tax rates, and I know it's difficult to read, but this is for the countywide taxes. The very first column is, this is all based on a $300,000 home in Camden County, and that is determined, it's the median or average home value in the county from the tax assessor's office. That's why we picked 300. And in the ads that we run, we use 300,000 because we're mandated by the state of Georgia to use the average homestead value in the county. So that's why we're starting with 300. Some people might have much more. Some people might have some things less than that. But what this does is it calculates what your taxes are, and this does not include the freeze in the sense of that 300,000, your house might be worth 600,000 today, but when you bought it, it was 300,000. So, or you just bought your house for 300,000. So, but I didn't factor that into these calculations, so just keep that in mind. But, so the 300,000, we calculate a property value of 40% on that, which brings us down to 120,000. If you have homestead exemption, not the freeze, a homestead exemption, which is a little bit different, we always take off $4,000 off the value to come up with a taxable value. We apply the millage rate, and in that first column, it's that rollback rate of 11.99, which would generate $1,384 in taxes. And as you go across, you could see, I, the next column is 12.1, which was last year's taxes, and that would generate 1,404. And it's a $20 increase over the rollback rate because that's what we always have to compare it to. So that very last column is the proposed tentative rate for 2025, and that compares to the rollback rate. It would be an additional $252 if the value that is taxed on your house is $300,000. And this is the same for the unincorporated tax district. So in addition to the countywide taxes, the first column is the rollback rate, which is 1.123. And the tax rate last year was 1.121. It was very, it was basically the same, so there was no change. And as you go across, the difference from the very last column is what the proposed rate is, 2.6 mills, and that would be $171 more than you're paying on the rollback rate per taxpayer. This is an analysis of just the property tax. What I'm looking at is what the county is generating in revenue from the rollback rate versus what the tentative rate is. So the first dark orange column is the rollback rate. So we started with a gross digest. We take out all the exemptions. We end up with a net digest of 2.4 billion. We apply the rollback rate to it. Tax levy's 29 million. We never collect all that, so I'm looking that we would collect about 28 million. So the, the math on that comes out to 1 mill of tax equals about $2,375,000 of revenue for the county. So the next column is the tentative rate. So we would be generating net property tax collections of 33. almost 5 million. And in the unincorporated, you would compare the rollback rate. We would collect 719,000 versus 1. almost 7 million. And these are the major capital projects. The first one is the new jail, the 300-bed facility. It's in the strategic plan as a top priority. The estimated cost is 50 million. And the funding sources for that, we do expect to have excess from SPLAST 8 once all the projects are done, but they need to be complete at that time. We're, for purposes of estimating, it'll be about 4 million. SPLAST 9 is specific that it has 10 million designated for the jail. If we raise the tax and are able to generate more revenue, we would have additional general fund reserves of 3.5 million. So the jail, to get a loan or a bond, we call it a bond, the project funding would be $32.5 million. The estimated animal control shelter is also in the strategic plan as a top priority. The project cost is about 3 million, and the entire amount would need to be financed. So that last section is combining those two because that's how we would get the bond as a combined project. We would make the assumption that we're getting a loan for 35.5 million. It would be a 20-year loan at 5% interest. Those are all estimates at this point. So the principal and interest annually would be 2.8 million, and that would all be funded from the general fund, which is countywide taxes. And this is a depiction, I know it's hard to read, but this is just, it's a loan schedule. So the first section is if we didn't have that additional revenue from raising taxes this year, and we had to borrow $39 million. Once the, it's fully, when we're making full payments on it, it's almost $3.1 million per year payback for 20 years. On this middle section, if we were to apply the additional tax revenue to that, we would only need to borrow 35.5 million. And that would result in a tax payment each, or I'm sorry, a loan payment each year of $2.8 million. So that's over, just under $300,000 a year in savings. And what that comes out to is that very bottom line, that 5.6 million, what that includes is the savings of the 3.5. We put more money down, that 3.5 million, but we also saved over $2 million in interest. So it's no different than if you buy a home or a car and you put money down on it. Your interest payments over your 10-years or 30-year loan is going to be significantly less, and you're going to have a lot of savings. And it's a fiscally wise decision if you could do it. Another capital project is funding the Joint Development Authority. The fiscal year 26 budget is $1 million. Additional funding requested from the JDA is up to 1.25 million additional, and this is funded all through the general fund. And there's a draft intergovernmental agreement at this point, which is dated September 15th. And this is the request from the JDA, fiscal year 27, 1.5 million. Fiscal year 28, 1,750,000. Fiscal year 2029, 2 million. And fiscal year 30, 2,250,000. And this is the major project for the unincorporated tax district, which would come from unincorporated taxes specifically. It's the county parks, and this would be the county assuming full responsibility of maintenance upgrades and enhancements to all the existing county parks beginning in January of 2026. It's all funded through the unincorporated tax district, and these are some estimates that we've come up with of year one cost would be about $977,000. And after that... And after that, it would be about $538,000 for operating costs and payroll. This is I know that this is difficult to see, but it's the general fund budget for fiscal year 26. I just wanted everyone to see where the money was going to. So salaries and benefits, which includes salary, overtime, retirement contributions, Social Security, health claims, we're self-insured, workers' compensation, and then we consider uniforms and safety equipment as part of salary and benefits. And that's a mandated by the state of Georgia, chart of accounts. So that's part of salaries and benefits, and that's 64%, almost 65% of the budget. Contracted services, which is travel education, also all of our insurances, liability vehicle and equipment insurance. I've included the airport as a separate line item, which is 0.12%. And other services, janitorial, software maintenance, repair and maintenance of vehicles, that's 16, almost 17% of the budget. Supplies are just under 7%. Intergovernmental, the bad debt all refers to the EMS collections. We have to book things as bad debt when we have to make adjustments for insurance, like we bill the insurance. They always pay something different. Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance pays different, so we write off what we write off. So that's estimated at 2% of the budget. The libraries, the JDA is currently funded. And then also state and judicial agencies such as Drug Corps, Superior Corps, DA, et cetera. And that all totals just under 10% of the budget and transfers out to E-911. 911 is not self-sustaining under the fees collected from the state, and that's on your phone bill. You'll see $1.50 is collected. That goes to the state, and the state distributes that to the county, and it's not enough to run a 911 office. So the general fund always has to supplement the 911 operation, which is tracked in a separate special revenue fund. And then also transfers out to the capital improvement fund of almost $600,000. So the total budget is 47.8 million. And this is on the unincorporated tax district fund. Salary and benefits are 43%, much less than the general fund because we track all the insurances through the general fund. The only thing we've got here are salaries, cancer insurance policy for the firefighters and uniforms. So that's just under 44% of the budget. Contracted services, I did not total, and that's about just over 2% of the budget. Supplies are 4% of the budget. Intergovernmental is and that is funding the public service authority as the contract stands today and what was budgeted for at just under 16%. And capital equipment for fire, for mowing, and for the parks are 35% of the budget. So the total budget is 4,072,000. And this slide just summarizes what the tentative proposed rates are as advertised for the general fund, 14.2 mils, unincorporated 2.6 mils. And the the board always sets the incorporated Woodbine Fire District millage rate. I included it. It's the current rate is 1.361. This is the rollback rate, 1.368. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
I want to add one thing. Our residential digest, 74% of our budget is residential digest. Commercial is 15%. Industrial is 1%. Then there's a 10%, which is other. I'm not quite sure what the other is. But our tax digest is heavily weighted on residential, which is why we're here today. All right, with that, Katie, do we have any registered speakers?
Yes, sir, we do. And I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. Just correct me. The first is Ms. Sherrell Clark.
If you will, when you come up, state your name and where you live.
I live at 217 Trade Winds Drive, Woodbine, Georgia, south of.
Can you pull the mic a little closer?
That's off of Harriet's Bluff. My husband and I had two boys in college at the same time for a few years. So that they would not be caught up in student loans, we decided to take out half of my teacher retirement. We paid for their tuition, gave them a tank of gas a week. We paid for their residencies in their books. Then, once every two weeks, we gave them grocery money. One called a few days after they received grocery money and asked me if he could get double the amount that I had given him because he had spent his money on other things and did not act responsibly. That is what this tax increase feels like to families here. We already gave you the money, but part of it wasn't managed responsibly. Now you're asking us to fix it.
I received two via speaker request form, and I'm not sure if they were going to be here at the 9:00 or the 5:00. I mean, the 10:00 AM or the 5:00 PM. So I'm just going to go ahead and call their name. If they're not here, I will call them again at 5:00. Stephen Fayad. Oh, perfect.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Stephen Fayad. I live at 120 Amanda Trace, and I'm here to express my strong opposition to propose any proposed tax increases. This proposal, commissioners, is not only ill-timed, but it is a breach of public trust. Just last year, Camden County voters approved SPOLOST 9, committing over $37 million in new funding for critical infrastructure, public safety, and community projects. We were told, even assured, that these projects would be funded without the need for a property tax increase. That promise was a major factor in securing voter support for SPOLOST 9. Yet here we are, less than a year later, facing the possibility of a property tax hike to cover the same projects outlined in the SPOLOST. Roads, public safety, recreation, and capital improvement projects. This is a classic bait and switch. It undermines the confidence the voters had when they approved SPOLOST 9. But that issue goes deeper than that. The issue here is broken promises throughout this county. It's about a decade of fiscal mismanagement that has left many of us here questioning how our tax dollars are being spent. Spaceport Camden is a perfect example. Since 2015, this county's poured over $12 million into a plan that was unpopular, legally challenged, and ultimately abandoned, leaving us with nothing but legal bills and political fallout. That money could have been spent on real infrastructure improvements, emergency services, or recreation, but instead it was wasted on a speculative vanity project that never delivered. Meanwhile, the Public Service Authority, responsible for managing our parks, youth programs, and recreation, has underperformed for years. Citizens across the county continue to report aging facilities, limited programming, and poor communication. Now we are being told we need to raise the taxes to improve recreation. But where's the performance review of the PSA? Why are the municipalities now taking over the functions that the PSA is supposed to handle without taking appropriate funding from them? We already see better parks and better facilities in their surrounding counties despite us having larger property values, larger populations, and we're paying for similar services. If we are going to raise taxes, we need to see a detailed plan. Commissioners, we need to know how these funds are going to be spent and, most importantly, how outcomes will be measured. We can't continue to trust a government that has not earned our confidence. This proposal is coming forward without transparency, without accountability, and without a clearly defined spending plan. Let's be clear, I don't believe anyone in this room is against progress. We're not against investing in our future. We're not against investing in our communities. We are against writing a blank check to the government that has shown no ability to manage our money wisely. Our millage rate is already above the state average.
Your time's up, sir.
Can I submit these in writing?
Yes, sir. I'll take it from you.
Thank you. All right, next, Katie.
I'll make sure it's in there. Next is Jacqueline Guy. Is she here, Jacqueline Guy? Okay, maybe she'll be here for the five.
Hi, my name is Candra Wells. I live at 311 Palmetto Street in St. Mary's. A lot of what the gentleman before me said, I absolutely echo, and that was a lot of that was stuff that I wanted to share with you. But I also want to understand why the information that was given to us today, this and what you read, Commissioner, I don't know if you're listening or not. You haven't really shown any facial response to anything anybody said. Why that information wasn't pushed out to us with any kind of effort beyond putting it up on a website or sharing it at a meeting that nobody attends? Where was the public relations? Where was the the meetings out in the public, going to the senior homes, going to places where people gather and sharing that information and asking them, hey, we want to pass this tax. What do you guys think? This is what we want to do with the money that you give that you're giving us. Furthermore, this body does have a very poor record of fiscal responsibility. Why on earth would we give you more? And I don't understand why you're having pollings by telephone, one-on-one, which I believe is a gross violation of the Open Meetings Act. You're a public body. You're discussing public business. Why are you afraid to discuss it in public? Because it stinks, that's why. It also stinks that you would maybe is it in the strategic plan to raise taxes? Does your strategic strategic plan say, okay, we're going to spend this, but when we get to this limit, we're going to go ahead and ask everybody to give us more money? Where in the strategic plan did it say, hey, we're going to have to ask for more money because we can't meet our obligations? Are you not planning properly? What's what's going on here? You have a paid professional here that is is goes to school to know how to do that. And if he's not doing it right, maybe you need to get somebody else. If you guys don't know how to do it, hire somebody who does instead of keeping on coming back and asking us for more money and more money and more money. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll put you down at the bottom.
My name is Mark Fouts. I live at 310 West Bryant Street in St. Mary's. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, citizens. Couple of questions I've got on this proposed budget thing. First thing is the jail. We need 300 beds. I look at the arrest report in the newspaper every week, and I don't see that 300 is a really is a fictitional is a fictitious number. The other question is, when are these 300 beds needed? Is it 2027, 2028, 2030? Why are we building something that we don't know that we need in the future? Why don't we build something, say, 100 beds, and then have plans to expand it if necessary? I know you've got you've got people that give you advice, but let's face it, they've been wrong a whole lot of times. And on top of that, if we've got that many really bad desperadoes, I think there's a big jail down in Florida that's not being fully utilized. Why don't we send them there? It's already built. Second thing, JDA. We pour money into JDA. That is an investment that all of us make in this county. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I have never seen an annual report from the JDA delivered to this body in public and to every other financing institution. I want to know what they're doing with our money. I want to know what my return on investment is. I want to know what their expenses are. If they're not meeting, I'm an investor. If people don't beat my return on investment, I don't take give them my money anymore. That's what I feel with JDA. I want to know what they are doing and how they are performing every single day. Parks Department, you just said we need a lot of equipment for the Parks Department. Didn't we fund equipment for PSA? Where is that equipment? I've seen it rotting out in the in the in the field at the, what do you call it, the soccer place, just junk. It was good stuff, but it was left out to be junk. Why is that? You know, Mr. Sane said that Camden County is one of the highest tax areas in Georgia. We're not one of the highest population areas. How is this happening to us? And another thing I'd be interested in is anybody can anybody provide the top 20 expense-related accounts that have seen the greatest increase in expenditures in the last five years? I'd be really interested to see where our money is going on an expense basis and how much of it's going out there. And someone explain to us why these accounts are increasing the way they are. I can't get into your database, so I can't run a spreadsheet on it, but somebody sure can. Somebody should have done it already. You guys ought to already know that answer right off the bat, exactly which expense items are are the greatest generators.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Stewart, and I'm from 271 Mailard Point Drive, Woodbine, Georgia. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, town people and folks, retired and still dedicating yourself to the community. I vote no on the millage rates. Why? Okay, let me take you back to some history on this. 1988, there was 21,000 people here. Average rate of people making money was $17,000. My house that I bought in Harriet's Bluff was 63.5. The only thing I could qualify being E6 in the military because at 73, it was too high and have to go to Crooked River. And you compare that house to a $300,000 house? Sorry. I'm very sorry for you guys. I have a two-inch well. Everybody's got a four-inch well. Every house and septic tanks, mostly in the community, have two septic tanks, a dirty and a clean. I have one. I've got a six-foot ditch behind my house for drainage that not only gets filled, but it floods the street out front. They say you got nice riverfront property when I sent the pictures. I've been here three times and appraisals and won because you keep raising my rate. What good does it do me to win these appraisals, get my homestead exemption and my senior exemption, and then a guy buys a $300,000 house and he pays 1,500? That's just like going down the community when I bought the house. I'm paying $600 a month. $100 a month was for State Farm to actually take care of the insurance for it. Within five miles, there was $600 to $2,000 for the insurance. This community has to start work for the people. I go to school and I'm fighting for my kids because they're not getting their schoolwork, and they're not getting books to work with, and they're just about ready to walk and go to graduations. And I had to talk to the principal, who said I was important that he had to go walk around with his fatigues on, and I'm retired military, and I disrespect anybody doing that. It was more important for him taking care of the people that are now. It was more important for him taking care of the people that are not producing in school, and we're paying for it. He's getting 160,000. We got a coach at the football team getting 140,000. And you want to charge me more? I give to the community.
Your time's up, sir. Thank you.
David Smith.
Thank you, Board. I'll make this quick because I know three minutes goes a lot quicker than I thought it does. First off, I think it's a shame that this come to this point. It's come to this point because of lack of planning, lack of prioritization, lack of critical thinking. And I definitely didn't appreciate your opening comment. The blame you're trying to redirect at the people for not showing up? Well, when I've been here before, you haven't listened to the people.
No, no, I was talking about Commissioners not showing up.
Oh, okay. Sounds like you were mentioning the people.
No, no.
But I do know who you do listen to, and that's county manager and the bureaucracy that's been here. Now, we have a bureaucracy for a reason. It's to maintain consistency through the government as you go through elected cycles. Well, in 2012, the county got notification that something had to be done with the jail. That's 13 budgeting cycles and two full cycles of SPOLOST. Well, I haven't gone through the SPOLOST before this last one, but you had $10 million going JEA. Someone mentioned that earlier. In November of last year, it was stated that Mr. Gross had the money to go forward with the project, that they were funding on that, and that he had the willingness to, whether the Board voted to approve it or not. So what the heck was he even doing on SPOLOST? That's 10 million that could have gone to the jail. Not to mention, if you started budgeting from 2012 on, you would have had the money, or at least be a lot closer. So what's our solution for, for planning? Taking out a loan with almost $20 million of wasted interest payments that could be going to future projects. Well, I just want to say Commissioner Smith has a plan. I hope that you check it out. It's on the District 3 Facebook page. Thank you.
Next, Kate.
Ray Holland.
Chairman Casey and others, good morning. I want to personally thank you for serving the citizens of Camden County. As I am personally aware, serving in a political position can at times seem to be like a thankless job. But I want to note, becoming elected gives you the title and the opportunity to sit in the seats that you are sitting in to represent the people and not just to do what you feel in your heart that needs to be done, instead of listening to the people's concerns. Now, there are times when people want things that can't be prudently effective for running the Commissioner or running the county, and those when you need to do the right thing. That brings us to today. By using a millage rate increase, you're attempting to address a public safety problem and animal shelter issues that has been in place well before the millions of dollars were frivolously spent on rocket-launching dreams. In contrast, if those millions were responsibly used for our needs, we wouldn't be here today. By bringing your desire to increase the millage rate on the heels of a citizens voting and passing SPOLOST 9, on top of ever-increasing annual real estate value assessments, and on top of a school board increasing taxes on their own spending issues, is very infuriating. Let me make it clear, I do not stand in support of any millage rate increases. In regards to SPOLOST 9, many of us attended the prep rallies that were around the county, and there was things not told to us. You know, we weren't told that if the amount of money to be used was only a primer on, to start on these projects. And we weren't told that even after SPOLOST 9 was approved, the taxes are going to increase significantly. And one of the common guidelines in setting up a SPOLOST 9, or a SPOLOST together, you need to be financially prudent to put a cost on projects that significantly reduce having to raise any taxes or taking money out of the county coffers. These spending problems and ever-increasing real estate value assessments and millage rate increases are leading down a path, a path taxing people out of their homes and no longer allowing young people and older alike to continue the American dream of owning a home. Before you keep demanding more from us, we need to demand more from you. We expect you to be, start being more physically responsible, implement strict controls on unnecessary expenditures, stop funding wish lists, start prioritizing projects with extreme scrutiny, consider budget revision cuts, and stop laying the burden on us to overfund the county coffers. I think it's time to dig deep beyond low-hanging fruits that we all see and root out the WFA, Waste, Fraud, and Abuse. Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you.
Mark Wade.
My name is Mark Wade. I live off Clark's Bluff Road. I'd like to first say that I'm totally against this tax increase that you're laying on us. Within the past year, you have gone and reappraised our property taxes. My question, is that being figured into some of this budgeting that you guys are wanting or talking about? Secondly, I feel like I, as a taxpayer, was duped on this SPOLOST 9 agenda that came out. There's several places that it states in there, this SPOLOST needs to be passed in order not to be able to raise property taxes. And here you are, wanting to raise property taxes again. This bunch here has eroded the trust and confidence in the taxpayers. You are terrible fiduciaries of our taxpayer money so far, and I just want to make it known that I'm totally against this, this tax increase.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard Davis.
Howard Davis, 5035 Clark's Bluff Road, Kingsland. Gentlemen, I appreciate the time you are allowing myself and other citizens to address you. It was, a statement was made before this meeting began that one Commissioner was totally against any tax increase. I certainly appreciate that, and I'm sure the citizens appreciate that. There was a signed statement by two Commissioners on Facebook that said they were not in total support of a tax increase. Gentlemen, I hope you will listen to the citizens, your constituents, and not pass a tax increase. I don't think it's necessary. I'll give you one example. The mowing that is done on the right-of-ways of county highways. Clark's Bluff Road from the city limits of Kingsland to the end of Clark's Bluff, where it dead-ends, last year, there were basically five people mowing that right-of-way, and it took them not quite one day. This year, there's 10 people, four trucks, two four-wheelers, and I think four or five lawn mowers. I know there's four. And it takes them two days. Why can it be done more efficient last year than this year? I can't answer that, but I would like to have an answer. So, gentlemen, thank you for your time. Citizens, I hope we prevail on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenneth Stanis, would you like to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Stanis. I live at 1889 Greenville Road out in Brown Town. I'm not sure what all is going on, or why, or where we got here, but have you guys thought about thinking outside the box? I mean, all of the prisoners over there in the jail don't come from the unincorporated areas of Camden County. Are the cities of St. Mary's, Woodbine, and Kingsland paying to put their prisoners in there? How does that work? I don't know. I've never seen it published anywhere. But I mean, there's a lot of different things that can happen, and I agree with what a lot of the folks have been saying. I think a lot of this has just been mismanagement by, not necessarily you all, but maybe your predecessors or whatever that came with it. But there's got to be some way that we can do this, because right now I can see it hurting the people that can least afford this in this county. So, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is that all the rest here? All right, anybody want to come up and speak? Come on up, sir.
You go ahead. I was going to say age before beauty, bud.
All right, this gentleman over here will be next.
Roger Shaw, 30 Merrimack Court, St. Mary's. I've been up here quite a few times before, but I stopped coming because you guys just don't listen to me. So, anyway, I decided I'd come to this one. I left California 11 years ago, and what I saw there in California was what the administration would say, that we don't, we don't have a spending problem, we have a taxing problem. So whenever the situation was there, we raised the taxes, we raised the taxes, we raised the taxes. If I got so bad, I had to get out of there. Could not do it. Now, I'm here. I'm retired. I have a small disability from the military, and I'm on Social Security. Last year, my impound account for my mortgage went up $150 a month. A lot has to do with increase in taxes, both county and city and insurance. So here we go. I've been in a number of organizations where they were faltering organizations. They wanted to raise the dues, they want to do this. I said, "Look, I was 37 years as a general building contractor, never lost money." Okay, that's the second highest failure rate of any business in the country, behind restaurateurs. I would say, "No, we're not going to raise any money. We're going to do this more efficiently." And we would end up making more money by doing it efficiently than raising our dues or raising the fees that we charged. I look back at this county, just in the 11 years I've been here. What do we have? Waste, fraud, and abuse from the PSA. Nobody went to jail. We had this dilemma with the bright, shiny object of a spaceport, that we poured millions of dollars into superfund sites that would take tens of million dollars to clean up because it was so hazardous. Now, we're looking at the next bright, shiny object, which is the airport. How many millions of dollars we're going to pour into that? What, an example that was endemic of what's going on was when we had a resident that came up here and complained about the noise from the gun range, again and again and again. He was subject to this. I came up and I debunked every one of his arguments, every single time. And what did the county do? They spent $130,000 to put acoustical baffling in the pistol range because one person was crying about this stuff. I'm only five foot four. I go to Walmart, I can't reach the top shelf. I gotta get somebody tall to reach there. Now, if I was complaining to Walmart because they discriminate against me because I'm altitunely challenged, you think they would change their policy? Absolutely not. Because they're a private organization, they wouldn't waste the money doing that. Thank you so much.
Hey, my name's Steve Gross, 110 Pinto Court over in Woodbine. I've been a resident here for about 12 years, and start out by saying, "Boy, I love Camden County." Came from up in the Northeast, loved this county and almost everything about it. But there's a lot of questions I didn't hear today, a lot of things nobody spoke about, and I think you guys are missing a huge part of the picture. So some of those things are, how many new housing units, high-density, went in in Kingsland and St. Mary's in the last two years and are going to go in in the next two years? Are we going to have 8, 10,000 new residents? Do we know this? How many new students are predicted for our schools in the next two or three years? Another 1,000, 1,500, 2,000 students going to show up? How many new classrooms do we need to accommodate them? How many more sheriffs do we need? How many more deputies do we need to take care of our increasing crime problem due to our increasing population and unchecked development? We're developing out of control, in case nobody's noticed what's going on down in Kingsland and St. Mary's. It's out of control. The only ones controlling it are the developers. How many new county employees are we going to need? How does the new tax basis relate to that? Where are the dollars and cents going to come from to cover these things? Are you guys looking ahead or just behind at stuff you knew about 20 years ago, like needing a new jail? So here's some things you should be thinking about. The JDA, I would like to see, show me their successes in the last 12 years. I haven't seen a single success. Why aren't we eliminating the JDA? It's a cost basis. It's not an income basis. It's a cost basis. We don't need it. We don't want it. We don't want spaceport. We don't want that giant marina on a landfill that nobody's going to use. All this stuff is pie in the sky. It's never going to happen. It's just money out of our pockets. We don't have to build a new jail. There's no law saying, "Hey, Camden County's got to build a new jail." Fix up what we got. Get by with what we got. Make things happen with what we have. Stop trying to bilk the people out of money to make Camden County something it's not. Keep it rural. Keep it quiet. Keep it what it is today. Don't ruin it, because you're well on your way to doing that now. And I've seen it. Where I came from in the Northeast, I came there because I watched this very thing happen. And if you'd like me to detail it for you, call me, and I'll sit down with you for an hour, and I'll show you exactly where you're heading.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on up, Ben.
Hush up, Robert. My name's Ben Goff. I live at Haritz Bluff. I've heard it mentioned already this morning, but my topic is shiny stuff. Raising taxes is one thing, but the reasoning for the need is a different absolute. What I've observed over the years and find is to be no different, is this county administration has a tendency to throw money at every shiny thing that comes up in a reactionary manner. There are many issues related to this announcement, and I'm not going to beat the drum over them, but I do have some comments and suggestions about the projects addressed. Jail or law enforcement complex? Why is there a need to double the capacity from 150 to 300 beds? What has been the consensus reached by an independent entity as to the need for new versus refurbished? How many open work orders exist at this time? Why is there even one for the jail? Do the maintenance. We wouldn't be here talking about a new one. Animal control facility? So we can house 20 dogs in the current facility. May not be nice and shiny, but what is the real need? What is the real need? Parks? For years, we have poured millions into the county parks through the PSA. Do we have any idea how beneficial those millions were to the upkeep of the those millions were to the upkeep of the facilities? Who kept score? In a real-world corporation, these would be questions posed to the CEO of the organization. And it's my contention that this should be the case here. You are the board. Man up. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on. You'll go next, sir.
Future voters.
Hi, my name is Susanna Fattato. I live at 136 Walnut Way in Kingsland, Georgia. We have lived in Camden County for about 11 years now, and we love it. It's fantastic. We represent both a young family dynamic in our area as well as in our very own neighborhood, my husband's parents moved down to live with us to enjoy being with family, but also to enjoy the better taxes that we have here in Camden than especially where they came from in Canada. My husband and I moved down from New Hampshire. So, just to give you some context, very high taxes. Well, I distinctly remember as a young person in New Hampshire going to yard sales on the weekends. And there was one that really stood out to me because every single weekend, an older couple seemed to have half of their house on their front lawn. And they sold things. They sold things. And one time, I finally asked them, "Why do you hold these yard sales every weekend?" They said, "To afford our property taxes." They were retired. They had no way to increase their income. They were just selling off their furniture, their appliances, everything they had to try stay in their home until they died. That sounds extreme, but my in-laws are on a fixed income. That doesn't sound out of like, that doesn't sound that crazy to me anymore. And even for myself and my husband, we have five young children. A tax increase like this, and I'm not, we love having five kids. It's amazing. I also homeschool them. So, we're not getting some of the benefits from the local school district. We don't actually want them either. But the point is, we are paying 100% for our children's education in addition to paying taxes to the school district. So, an increase like this hits us hard. It hits us hard, and it hits our in-laws hard. There isn't a way to back that off. And I, what I would really like to see in Camden, before we even talk more about tax increases, is a Doge-style audit of Camden County. I want to see where everything is going, and I would like to see excesses trimmed. We'll just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Susanna, could I get her to just repeat her name for me? I did not catch it. Your last name, how do you spell it? Over here. I almost had it right. Thank you.
Good morning. Jack Horn, live on Hayner Road in Waverly. We are part of the outsiders. As you said earlier, Kingsland, Woodbine, St. Mary's areas, they don't pay an impact fee. Why is this? We've got every one of those houses, every one of those residents that have kids come to the school that our taxes out here pay for. We have to pay, every one of us that live out there pays a impact fee. I'm fixing to build a house right next door for my daughter. There's $5,000 almost in impact fees that is going to associate through this. Not everybody can afford that kind of stuff. Not everybody can afford these taxes that we've got coming up. I agree 100% with the lady before me. We need a outside source, not a source that y'all mandate, but a outside source to look into these books. Got guys over here looking very disoriented, like y'all even want to be here today, like this is a hindrance to y'all. Your facial expressions. Some of us on the telephone over here constantly don't give a dang what our guys are saying or our people out here are saying. Step it up. Be the person that we put y'all in the office for. You want to raise taxes? I'll support the tax raise only after we do a citizen-approved Doge audit. Let's see where that money's going. We spent multi-million dollars on spaceport. Why are y'all asking for more money to fund stuff that you're going to throw away anyway?
Thank you. All right, who's next?
I'm Jimmy Spence. I live at 46 Horseshoe Court West, Waverly.
Get on and repeat that since you're at the mic.
I'm Jimmy Spence. I live at 46 Horseshoe Court West, Waverly. Part of the outside gang, I guess, as Mr. Horn referred to us. I'm an electrical contractor, and I know a lot of you guys here. Some I know better than others, but at the end of the day, we all have financial responsibilities, whether you're a business owner or a homeowner or renter or whatever. You still have financial obligations that you have to meet. So, I'll give you a couple of, for instances, based on my experience. And we'll go back to before I was a business owner. So, you go to try to get a job. You basically, you have to sell yourself to your potential employers. So, you know, basically, you know, you chasing, everybody's chasing money. You know, I don't blame you. I don't blame me. You know, everybody's, at the end of the day, you got a financial responsibility to this county that you have to meet. And so, the budget has to be met. Whether it's the unpopular thing of raising taxes or cutting spending, you know, you got to do what you got to do. But, you know, in our households, you know, if I don't have the money to go on vacation this year, well, I just don't get to go on vacation. I can't go to my boss man or my clients and say, "Hey, I want to go on vacation. I'll buy any up, you know, $100 extra on your bill for my vacation fund." You know, I'd get fired real quick, and that'd be the end of that. So, at the same time, I get where you guys are. I've sat on boards. I've been beat up by the public. I get it. But you kind of accept that when you run for office. But I'm not here to beat you over your head. I know it's based on previous administrations, I guess you'd say. But my other point would be, I've done a pickleball court lighting bid for Glenn County Parks. I call names, but that's the way it is. So, the lighting package required a certain amount of light to meet the code for lighting to play pickleball. So, this is a game that you play. So, you can get area lighting or you can get sports lighting. The difference in the two packages for the same amount of light, it was $97,000 for the sports lighting package or $38,000 for the area lighting package. But they wouldn't accept the area lighting package because it didn't meet the criteria for playing pickleball. So, I mean, it's like, you know, come on, people. You need light to see, to hit a ball. You're not professionals. You know, you're not having games, whatever. At the end of the day, it's about physical responsibility. So, where I'm going with that is you can spend a million dollars on a building or $10 million on a building. You need to make sure you spend your money adequately.
Time's up. Thank you. I'll get to you next.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Long. I live at 202.
Nancy, can you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Hi, I'm Nancy Long. I live at 202 Crichton Way in St. Mary's. I want to make one reference to one of the charts that you showed from your website, the current 2025 Tax Digest and five-year history of levy. The net digest value in just five years went up 70%. I don't know too many of your constituents whose incomes have gone up 70% in the last five years. I know it took me, working for a large corporation, 20 years for my income with excellent reviews to go up that much. I also, last night, I've been seeing on television and on the Internet a softening of real estate. And I was curious, is that softening happening here? So, last night, I did a couple of web searches. I went to Realtor.com. I searched for homes only and came up with 267 homes, Kingsland, Georgia, single-family homes for sale. 69 of 267 homes for sale have been reduced to try to sell, and approximately 1/3 of those are new construction. I also went to HudhomesUSA.org for zip code 31558, and it says 1,008 foreclosures are available. So, this seems to me to be a softening in real estate. I'd be very interested in seeing, reading in the newspaper or seeing something put out from our local Realtors, supporting or disagreeing, but showing us some numbers of what's really happening in our own local economy. So, it really does not make sense to me for our taxes to increase 18%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Robert W. Hamm. I live at 153 Verano Street, Kingsland. In everybody's interest in time, I'd just like to say that I am retired, and I oppose a 28% increase. Thank you.
Come on up.
Good morning. Christine Adamo, 901 Ann Street, St. Mary's. This is the first time I've come to a county meeting, and I have to tell you, I am not impressed. I'm impressed with my neighbors in the county. But you gentlemen, you don't have a frickin' clue on how to manage. And you have a manager here who, all of you, if you could see how you look. I'm not here to berate you. My neighbors have given good evidence that we all have been doing our homework. The money that this county has has been squandered. It has been mismanaged for a long, long time. It has to stop. It has to stop now. There are two ways to stop it. And this tax increase, that is preposterous. We are one of the highest taxed counties in the state of Georgia. I live in St. Mary's. We are the 48th highest mileage rate for cities in the state of Georgia because we're subsidizing the county. Our services, which are supposed to be county-driven, our parks, our recreations, they are terrible. And then I get layered on with county taxes. Two ways to stop this. Do not pass this. Get that forensic accounting. Don't use the same accountant you've been using. They are not good for what we need. Go to the State of Georgia Department of Revenue. Get a forensic accounting. The second way we can stop this as residents and citizens, we can vote your asses out. We can ask for a recall. And if you don't want those jobs, resign. We'll bring some of these people in here that have a lot of knowledge, have time, resources, and experience to manage this county and this money properly. And as far as the manager goes, I feel sorry for you because these people are not setting you up for success. We need change. We need it now. We do not need an increase of 18%. That's preposterous. Fiscal mismanagement stops today. If it doesn't, we'll do a recall.
All right, who's next? Come on up, sir.
Greg Hausen, 146 Temple Landing, Kingsland, out in Brown Town. We going? All right, first, thanks to you. Great presentation. But you put out so much information that took 11 minutes. Mind-boggling. I wish, you know, for the budget, we're trying to figure out how you guys can save money if you'd put out the budget and let everybody ask questions line by line. The thing that I, a million bucks for travel and training. I'd like to know where that's going. Okay, that's my comment on that. Thank you very much. It was very professional, very good. If you're not an accountant, though, kind of over the head. Second, the JDA. And I brought this up to a meeting to you. They did the big thing when the governor came down and broke ground in St. Mary's. Okay? JDA took all the credit for that and everything, floated a $10 million loan to give the contractor a boost up or help him out and everything. He went belly up. First payment came. And it was in the paper, and I remember the quote, is the JDA had to cover that first loan payment was several hundred thousand dollars. And all they said is, "We came up with the money." And I asked you about it in a meeting in here, and you said, "Hey, that's the JDA's business." So, I don't know if they got a cookie jar with $300,000 in it or what, but they don't need another million and a quarter to increase their budget, in my personal opinion. And another gentleman here said that they should give a report or make a report public quarterly or annually or whatever. This is what we gave you. This is what we did with the money you gave you. It's very enlightening that when they get somebody in and there's an impact fee, that the county doesn't get any of that. So, like, they bring these people in for the old airport, that huge lumber company and everything. You're saying the county doesn't get anything out of that? So, why are we giving them any money? Let the city pay there. Do the JDA. Why is the county doing it? Me neither. That's called the Westinghouse salute. I don't know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who's next?
My name is Norma Brown, and I live at 3534 Dover Bluff Road in the unincorporated area. First of all, I would like to say I'm totally against more taxes. It is really hard. My husband and I are both retired. We're living off Social Security. I go to the grocery store every week, and things just keep getting higher and higher. And everybody is expenses. I don't care what kind of business you're in. Everything is going up. We don't go anywhere. We stay home because we can't afford it. Okay? Also, I would like to know if this meeting today, the meeting tonight, the meeting on the 7th, I believe, are we all wasting our time? Or are you guys even listening to what we have to say? And if you are listening, I would like to hear some response from you today and say, "What are your plans? What are you going to do? Or are you just going to push us all to the side? Or are you going to hear us? We can't afford this." So, please, listen to what we have to say and what the other people have to say. You know, I even thought, I told my husband, I said, "Maybe we need to move because it's getting expensive. We don't have no family here. We're on our own." We don't have no family here, we're on our own." And the lady that was talking about the yard sale and selling stuff, we've been selling stuff on Marketplace, trying to pay bills. I will give myself credit, we don't owe anybody anything, but we do it because we give up everything. We do things that we can afford to do, we go to the beach, we sit on the beach, that's free. You guys need to reconsider this, please, and look at your spending, and see where you can cut some budgets, not expect all of us to pay for it. And I tell you what, I still don't understand the whole 130, whatever it was, tax rate for unincorporated Camden, I think it was 131...
131.
Okay, yeah, I'm nervous standing here, so my brain is kind of going, too. But, again, I ask you, let's hear back from you. What are you hearing from the people today? Let us know what you're thinking, or are we just wasting our time? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Bauer from Harriet's Bluff. I hear we're still out on the hook for $3.6 million for a spaceport boggle, oh, you already paid it off? You shaking your head no? That's the first time you've ever said anything, and that's just bobblehead.
Mr. Bauer, that was not correctly reported, we were trying to collect that money, and that was it, that money is not owed to anybody.
Well, then, why did you sue the people of the county, when we tried to put a stop on it? Why was that?
Yeah.
No comment? Thank you. Where's all the equipment that's sitting around, the tractors, the mowers, that the county owns, that the PSA has, that's not being used? That ought to be put back in use, pull it back, you can do it, you're the county commissioners, pull it back, put it in use. The drainage ditches in front of my house are about this deep right now, and I can't get out there and cut it, I'll tell you right now. I'm 86 years old, pal, if you want to follow me around, come on. I'll take you on a journey. I ain't gonna carry you. What happened to all this other money that was big surplus that we had? And what happened to other things that's supposed to have been done? $4 million for a soccer field, and you're gonna tear down a $2 million putt-putt course to do that? Don't make sense. It's there, leave it. A bunch of volunteers went out there and worked on it. You got a boondoggle going on with that airport that you're talking about? We don't need that. Glen County's in trouble with theirs, so's the other county on the other side, Baxley, they're all in trouble with their airports, and yet, we want to have an airport. Well, not we, y'all. Let's get it straight, take priority first. Do priority first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Josh Proctor, I live in St. Mary's, Georgia. I'm also a real estate agent that serves the entire county. I'm against this miller rate increase. A lot of people moved to this area in favor of our lower taxes, but also see inefficiencies, a lot of redundant services through the multiple municipalities, and as a former state employee, I know about the use-it-or-lose-it budgeting that we have in place, which is horribly inefficient, and encourages waste, and I'd like to see some reform in that manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Good morning, Mike Page, 429 Meckel Place, St. Mary's. My concern goes not so much to the budget itself, or the amount of it, because there's plenty of room there to pick, and a lot of people have. But my concern is, are we utilizing impact fees to the maximum effect, particularly on these national builders and developers that are coming in here, build a gigantic subdivision, or a large apartment complex? That money leaves Camden County never to be seen again. My point is, we need to stick it to these people. They're causing a lot of this infrastructure problem, roads, utilities, and so on, schools, but it seems like they get off the hook, because we just want to grow, 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 no matter what. Are we assessing the maximum amount that we possibly can in that area? How does that work? For example, I know Espinade is a tad, right? What about the apartment complexes? Do they pay impact fees? We don't know?
I ain't gonna answer you.
I'm sorry?
That means no, sounds like.
Okay, thank you.
All right, before we close, I'll clarify your impact fee thing. Anything that is built within the city limits, the cities, I'm not sure if they collect impact fees or not, but if it's within the city limits, they get that money, not the county. If it's in a tad, any increase in property value goes to paying for the infrastructure for that tad. The county does not get that money.
Can we change that?
The county needs to adjust that.
Well, that would be, you know, the cities aren't gonna give up that money to give to the county. So, all right, we got one more person that wants to speak.
Be a citizen, put it on the ballot, we'll vote for that.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Isaac Muldoon, I'm a, I live in St. Mary's, Georgia. I'm a licensed real estate broker in Georgia and Florida, for four years and three years, respectively. My concerns are somewhat twofold. Broadly speaking, some of my fellow citizens have very well-stated the lack of trust, the violation of trust, and the poor stewardship, and some of that is the responsibility of some of the men sitting in front of me, some of it precedes you, I'm not gonna beat you over the head with all of that. But my other concern as well, is that Camden County is a draw for a lot of people that are moving into this area in the last handful of years, for lower property prices, especially compared to across the river, lower property taxes compared to where they're coming from, anyway. We're still one of the more expensive counties in the state of Georgia. But, the, I would implore you to consider the fruits of what you're considering with this property tax increase, because we've already seen some of that impact since this announcement has come about. I have a couple of clients within my brokerage right now, where they're already evaluating, looking towards Ware, Brantley, Charlton Counties, not for any dislike of Camden County, but simply because of these property tax increases, and some of the poor stewardship that's been shown in the past, there's no, from their perspective, there's no reason where, they've already doubled the property taxes for the unincorporated district, or they're considering that for this year, what's going to stop them from continuing along those lines further down? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Mr. Bauer, you already spoke, won't you?
I know I have.
All right, go ahead.
This is my house.
Go ahead.
Number one, and I'm gonna put it to you people, I want to thank you all, every each and one of you, personally. Thank you for coming today, it shows that we do have a little bit of intestinal fortitude to fight for what the hell we want. And I'd say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you."
All right, I reckon that's it. All right, thank you all for coming.
Wait, Chairman, Chairman, Commissioner Smith was waiting to go to the podium.
Come on up, Cody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. So, I do have an issue with the financial repercussions of this increase, but I also have concerns with the procedural ways that we've moved this forward. I don't believe there was a public meeting where a vote was taken for the Board of Commissioners to tentatively adopt the proposed miller rate, and that's what was advertised in legal organ. Do you have any comments to that?
Yes, I do, matter of fact.
Yes, sir.
We have never done that, ever.
Why not?
Hold on a minute, we will going forward, definitely, definitely. However, you know, you're talking about, you think we broke some kind of law, or whatever, the sheriff's office is standing back there, you can go back there and report it. If you don't want to talk to them, you can call the GBI and report that, so have at it.
If we don't want to have an official meeting where we tentatively adopt the rate, I think I'll go over and speak to Superior Court for a writ of mandamus and prohibition. Thank you.
Go ahead. You know, you wanted to cancel this meeting, and you wanted basically to cancel it by email.
It's out of order.
Well, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Ben, can I say something?
Come on up, John.
I'm John Wojcik, I live at 247 Peoples Road, Kingsland, Georgia. I've been attending a lot of Commissioner meetings for a long time, but I've never seen a group of Commissioners that can't get along with each other. It seems like half of you guys are against the other half, and this is not a good example for the public. Why not?
Why we have five?
That's why you have five, so you can have enough.
But, but-
Let him speak, please, let him speak.
For them to throw personal attacks at each other during an event like this, is not kosher, okay? I mean, you just don't beat somebody up in front of a bunch of people. Take, you guys take your complaints behind there, and try to get some kind of unity. You don't have to agree with each other, but throwing garbage and insults at each other is not good for the community, it's not good for people to move down here to see this discourse. I understand, I agree with a lot of you guys, I'm not saying I don't, but when you have discord coming from the Commissioners is not good. I'm not for the taxes either, but I'm not going up here and slam them, I'm gonna say my piece, and that's it. But I don't need to say anything dirty to any one of them, or to this man here. I don't need to do that. Just get it off your chest of why you don't want a tax increase, but don't, don't attack them.
Thank you, John. All right, now we're gonna close this meeting, we'll see y'all this afternoon at 5 o'clock. Thank y'all.